We have us here today, Mark, Casey and me. So we have a quorum. Can I get a motion? Have we all read the staff report?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept staff report?
Make a motion to accept the staff report from, was it May?
Twelve.
Twelve, two thousand twenty-one. I'll second that.
Vote?
No, it's today's staff report.
Oh, today's staff report, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Today's staff report. Yeah. Today's staff report for six fifteen, no, six one nine, today's the ninth, correct?
Yes.
Today, the ninth, for last month's staff report. I'll second.
Can I have a vote on this?
Aye.
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 Aye. I have three. Did we all get to read the minutes from last May twelfth meeting? You guys all get to review those?
Yes.
Any errors, see any amendments? Hey, can I get a motion to approve or correct?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I second that.
Can I get a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, communications with Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of County Commissioner meeting, the John Cash Lost Creek Zone Map Amendment from agricultural to include an M D two overlay was approved as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have.
That's all you have for Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, it looks like we have one public meeting today. Can we, you going to review that for us?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first application, well, the only application at this meeting is the property owner is Scott and Judy Schinkel. The applicant is Judy Schinkel. Legal description is approximately two point nine five acres of tract land. It's in the southeast quarter, southwest quarter of Section Eight Township Twenty-five North, Range One oh five West, also known as six thirty-one, Highway twenty-eight, Farson, Wyoming. The current zoning of it is rural residential. As far as infrastructure, most everything up, there's no public water system, so it's on well and septic. And it's in the Farson Eden Fire District. Y dot Highway twenty-eight is the main access point into the property. So they're requesting a zone map amendment. The, in accordance with our Section twenty of the zoning resolution, is for approximately two point nine five acres. And it's a, the minimum district size for retail business is one acre. So this district is intended to accommodate retail sales of consumer goods and services directly to the customer due to the nature of the services provided. B zones may be appropriate adjacent to residential areas if adequate setback in design standards are implemented. And good design and adequate off-street parking should be a part of any new area. Obviously, that's because, you know, with the retail business type, especially because it's a very small minimum district size that we allow. You want to make sure that, I mean, not necessarily with this site, but when you get into like Mountaineer subdivision, want to make sure there's enough on-street, not off-street parking, so you don't have people parking down the street. So you'll probably see another zone map amendment, not today. Probably in August of another one, and it'll be in the Mountaineer subdivision. So they're starting to become a popular zone district. We only have one property in the entire county that is Zone B. So this will be the second one if it's approved. So it's a newer zone district with a very small, the reason for the small acreage is so that you can allow neighborhood businesses within residential areas. You know, your little convenience stores and such, you can put them throughout residential areas. That's the real intent of this zone district. So when the applicant came in, there's different options for, he's wanting to do a rock shop up there, retail-type business. You can do that in a commercial zone district, but a B is more restrictive. C is really opens it up for oil and gas and that type of thing, and this is very specific to just retail. The property has highway frontage and already has an existing building on it. The intent is to establish a retail rock shop within the, this building that's on-site. They are wanting to use four hundred square feet or less than the building, so they would not need to go through the state for an electrical inspection. Still would require a fire inspection by Sweetwater County. So if you look up there on the screen, there's a location of the property. There is some, it's mostly agricultural, as you know, up in the Farson Eden area, and so that's all agricultural zoning around there. Then you have some rural residential that's located along the highway there, on the smaller acreages. And then this is the subject property here. And so here's the pictures to the north off of Highway twenty-eight east. And on the south, that's the existing structure. I went up there a couple of days ago. There's been a lot of cleanup on the property, so thank you, Mr. Schinkel, for cleaning the property up. The building is in rough shape. I'll just leave it at that. It does look like it needs some work. This was a site of a nuisance violation years ago, so Mr. Schinkel's done some work as far as cleanup the structure. I have not seen the inside of it, but definitely there's some broken windows on the top. It's a dome-type structure, and there were some broken windows up on the roof, so on the skylights and such, so definitely going to need to be some work done so that it will pass an inspection. The other thing to consider here, too, is the access point that's on the, this east picture here definitely will have to be upgraded. That's a residential or agricultural-type access, so that is going to need to be upgraded for, and they'll have to obtain a permit from Y dot. So we want to make sure it's consistent, compatible with current resolutions, so it meets, this will provide some small business-type activity on Highway twenty-eight on the way up to the Wind Rivers Range, up towards Lander. And the proposed zoning is suitable for existing topography. Does it create buildable lots? And it does. It's definitely flat, good for, open space for parking. Also for, but again, the access will need to be upgraded before, can actually, before you can open business on that site. Is it compatible with existing or allowable uses to adjacent properties and neighboring zone districts? The intent is to hopefully get this all cleaned up so that it can be utilized as a retail business structure. Adequate setbacks won't be an issue. There's adequate space for that. And also from the size of the business, as far as fire protection is limited in the area. There is a fire protection pond that's located at the intersection of twenty-eight, one ninety-one. And there's also a fire protection pond located at the school. That is the closest because there is no public water system up there. As far as water and sanitary sewer, that'll have to be addressed at construction permit. Don't know the status of that. And as far as not adversely affecting adjacent property owners, we had not received any comments at the time of the staff report. I believe there's an adjacent property owner here today, so I will hold off on comments on that. Let the property owner speak. And then the request conforms to applicable provisions. It does meet the minimum district size. The site was utilized as a single-family dwelling. So what that means is all, because we're changing uses, all the egress within the existing structure will need to conform to the International ICC Fire Code standards for mercantile. And restroom facilities and such, obviously, provided for the public. And as far as agency comments, Mr. Chairman, I have not, I did not receive anything from Y dot, but I know that they will require an updated access permit. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Open for any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Yeah, the applicant's here. Would the applicant like to address the board? Yeah.
So we can hear you.
Well, I'd just like to thank all of you for your time and opportunity to hear me out. My wife and I bought that property about a year and a half ago. Like you mentioned, it was in disarray. It's, it's been kind of, kind of an adventure, just to give you a heads up. Last summer, within that dome, the dome structure only, we took nine thousand pounds of paper out of that building. It was a mess, and it's still a mess. The bones of the building are there. It's something that can be worked on, going to be money. And that was kind of my drawback last summer is that we put in a new fence. I guess it would be on the south border, approximately a quarter mile, and then from the south border back out to Highway twenty-eight. Prior to that, there were two or three pieces of barbed wire and fifteen posts, you know, it was that kind of thing. And Toby was able to graze his cattle in there for however many years, which is perfectly fine, but that's been resolved. My problem last summer was, I got laid off. I lost my job, just like so many other people, and we couldn't proceed with what we wanted to do last summer. Whether we would have ever been out there by the end of the summer, I'm not sure. But I did go through the permitting process to put in a septic tank. That was approved, but it's only good for a year. So now I'm probably going to have to do it again, but I don't have any concerns with that. Our plan would be to take the dome building, do some remodel on it, partition off on the inside to be under that maximum four hundred square feet of actual retail floor space. The rest of the building would be labeled like no public access beyond this point, something similar to that, and it would be a shop. It would be where I would do, I'm kind of a rockhound, and that's my passion, and that's where I would intend on doing things. So our plan is to set up a double-wide out there and hopefully make this work.
Either you guys have any questions?
So you're going to be, you're, for the business, I mean, you're, you'll have plenty of parking for?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's, there's almost three acres of property there. It's unencumbered space out in front of the building itself. Probably close to a hundred yards from the front door of the building, back over to the Highway twenty-eight fence.
I would, the highway department will require you to do like a thirty-foot top pad for your approach, and it'll probably have to be paved, just so it can give you an idea.
So when you, when you say top approach, is that where it?
The top of your, the top of the pavement has to be a minimum of thirty feet wide.
The top where it meets the highway?
No, that's the flared end. You're talking about the driveway, the roadway.
The driveway part, yes.
That'll be your approach from the, from, for the highway department. That's what they're going to require.
Okay.
Minimum. So just kind of keep that in mind also.
Yep, absolutely.
Fenced off, the neighbors don't have a problem, or?
Well, Mr. Eaton and I haven't had a whole lot of discussion about what is going to transpire, but the upper corner, I guess would be the north corner of that property. Approximately five hundred yards from his house.
I drove by your, that building many a times, so.
Right, right. You know, and it's a landmark. It's kind of a cool old building. A lot of people know, you say, hey, you know where the dome house is? Yeah, I know where it's at.
So you won't be living in that dome house. That'll be strictly just for the business.
Yep, yep, yep. It's just, and there is a possibility that, you know, we start into this project and realize that, hey, there's just too much to redo this building, and then that building would be tore down and a smaller structure built, you know, within the guidelines of whatever I have to do. Just one hurdle at a time, I guess.
Just a question for you, Eric. On that B zoning, is living space allowed along with that?
Yes, you can have a caretaker's quarters as an accessory use.
Thank you. But it has to be separate. He was talking about doing a mobile home?
Yes, it'd be okay.
No other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's open the meeting to public comments. Do we have anybody here in favor of this zone matching, or no, zoning?
He knows me as Toby. Been there forever. Nickname my grandmother gave me. I have three concerns between he and I. And then I have one public concern that I think we all need to address. I run livestock. People don't like livestock unless they're headed for the steakhouse. And they, you know, from a public standpoint, they can be smelly, they'll rub on your fence, but they look good in a steakhouse. I'm concerned there, there is that against the fence that joins he and I, and he put in an excellent sense, by the way. He did a really nice job on that. I have a garbage issue that I think when we start talking public, coming and going, we have prevailing west winds there. I, the gentleman used to own that prior to him. About every spring, I had him picking garbage out in my east pasture because I have the south side and the east side of his property. So I am concerned as to, to the garbage management. That can be an issue. Water, I think, is another probably major issue. I have an irrigation ditch runs full length to his property. There's a high-water table in there that in August, in past normal years, by August, that could be eighteen inches from the surface. This year, it's below that. For the last couple of years, it's been lower than that. But when I fill that irrigation ditch, it brings that underground level up, and it always will. So I don't want that to become a problem between he and I, or with the zoning commission, anything there. I think it probably is adequate for a home. I don't know whether it's adequate for a business.
So when he, when he does, I can comment, can I?
Oh, you're sure?
Okay. So when he does put, he has to have, he has to go through D Q and the county for his septic system. And when he determines it's going to be for business, he has to meet certain criteria for that. And with the water table being as high, it's going to cost him more money to put in a septic system, but they, they do mitigate that, so the septic system will not interfere, because you don't, you don't want contaminated water in your irrigation system. I mean, that's, you don't want that. And the D Q will take care of that when they do what they call a perk test. I'm sure you're well aware of that. So
Done that at my house.
Yeah, we, I've done it many a time. Yeah, so he, he, he'll have to understand that when he does that, he cannot interfere with, with your livelihood also.
Okay.
Yeah.
All that, these are my concerns. They've been there since the early seventies. I have one public concern that I am very concerned about, and I think he should be too, as well as you, is the approach that we've already discussed. That is a blind corner coming from the west. And it's very difficult at seventy miles an hour. You know, you're traveling pretty fast there. They cut one tree out because of accidents. I, since I've been there, I've had, I have been part of, so to speak, seven different accidents because they've ended up in my hay pen, my machinery yard, a Subaru upside down in my driveway. One in the irrigation ditch, one on the other side. I think this is something that really, for everybody's interest in this, I think that needs to really be checked out, what they can do, because it is seventy miles an hour through there. Coming from the east, it's not, you know, a situation other than the people crossing traffic from the west to turn in. But I definitely think that that's a public concern on that corner because it is, they kill people. They've killed two on that corner that I know of.
See, that'll be why, while that'll actually determine, he might have to put a third lane in. He might have to do some, some tree removal, whatever the case may be. We, we can't dictate what, you know, has to be done there. That'll be why on his access approach, and he has to be aware of that. Because you do bring up valid points. And we have, I mean, I couldn't tell you, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a wild dot engineer, but he has to abide by whatever they say.
Well, and they send, there's a lot of truck traffic on there. B T I runs there, a lot of trucking companies. A lot of oversized loads come through there because it's a secondary that they can manage oversized loads on. This is a concern for all of us. Okay? The others, the water, the garbage, and the livestock, if people don't mind the cows, the water doesn't become an issue, you know? But these are all things I have to look at as being a neighbor, and so that later on, he and I can still shake hands. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else comment? Yeah, close public comments? Anybody, any questions or comments, or?
I just, you, you do realize, I mean, Jim actually made some good points about the garbage. I mean, you don't want to have a bunch of garbage. Jim Zimmerman with the county will be, you know, he'll definitely be enforcing that.
No, I, I understand that, and
And you do realize with the septic system is, and when you have to do an above-ground septic system, whatever.
They're expensive.
They are expensive, just so you know, because you don't want Jim to be interfered with, you know, with his.
No, exactly.
And, and if you don't do it right, your public facilities will flood, and they won't work properly.
So I can tell you right now, that structure is a structure that was built on stilts. Okay? So I don't know the exact, basically, they built a huge deck, and then they built the structure on that deck. That's how they're made. I don't know that we'll ever have water going through there, but there's not a basement. That's my point, is there's, if the groundwater comes up, which it very well could, that's not going to be an issue.
But it will be for the septic system. That's what I'm saying.
It will. Now, the septic system, last summer, I did all the perk tests, went through that process with the lady at the state, and as of last summer, it was approved, and then I couldn't afford to do it. And it was just a standard septic system. It wasn't the raised.
You have to do it for, but you have to do it for, since it's a business, it's a little bit different. Did you, if you, if it's for a home, it's a little different requirements than if it's for a business.
Okay.
So you have to make sure that they do have that distinction.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the challenges. I was raised in a ranching community. My granddad was, and mom were ranchers all their life, you know? I understand Toby's, excuse me, Jim's concerns about the cows, but I think we could all use a little cow shit on our boots once in a while, so it's not that big of a deal. Absolutely, so.
You know what they say, fences make good neighbors.
Yep, absolutely. So, thank you.
Okay. Ready? Can I get a motion on this zone map amendment?
I will make a motion to approve the zone map amendment, rural residential to be retail business.
I'll second that motion.
You have a vote? Aye.
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 I'm all for growth, but you have to make sure you keep your neighbors happy, though, too.
I'll have to do the same thing in my house now, keep my neighbors happy. I challenge, it's not a challenge, I just look forward to the opportunity. He's a good guy. He's been in that community for many, many years. We've had some good discussion already. I don't ever really see a problem if we can't work out.
Okay, back to Eric.
Mr. Chairman, so just, this is just a recommendation. This is not an official approval until we go to the Board of County Commissioners next Tuesday. So for Mr. Eaton, Mr. Schinkel, just so you're aware, this was just a recommendation, so that, so we will, next Tuesday at eight-thirty in the same room here. My only question to you, just for the planning, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so have you talked to Y dot at all yet?
Well, I can't, fortunately, I can say that that's where I found work on the Y dot side, and a little birdie told me through the grapevine that this issue, not necessarily the issue, but the fact that we were having this meeting this morning, Y dot engineers were aware of it. this issue, not necessarily the issue, but the fact that we were having this meeting this morning, Y dot engineers were aware of it.
Okay.
That's the only information I got. I don't know what that means. I haven't seen any kind of a report from them. And obviously, they're not here this morning.
No.
If they're required or should be, but.
They're not, but I would recommend before the Board of County Commissioners, and I can send you that information, Darren Kaufman, and speak with him, because I think this is going to, that, Mr. Eaton's concerned, because I went up there, and I understand, it's a, it's very dangerous even just pulling out of there, because, and I know the fence is up, but I understand, Mr., that's probably my biggest concern, is the access into there. And see what they're, just tell them kind of what you're doing and see what they say. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's all your business, so anybody, anything else? With that, let's, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting of six, nine, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second that. And can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.